Monday, December the 2nd, 2024 Commissioners Meeting to Order. We have some business to do this morning, but we'll start with the most important business of all. It's a pledge of allegiance and the invocation by Commissioner McClure.
Thank you, amen. Most gracious having me, Father. We thank you, Lord, for this day. We thank you for all that you do for us, for the way you watch over us, for the blessings that you have given to us as individuals, as a state, and as a county. Lord, we just thank you for the opportunity that we have to serve, as Steve usually says, a free people.
Amen.
And that, in fact, we are. And we just thank you, Lord, that we were born in an area, in a country, where we do have the privilege of not only voting, but holding office. And, Lord, along with that comes a lot of responsibility. And we thank you and pray, Lord, that you would help us to fulfill the duties that we have and help us to do the responsibilities and fulfill them as we go forward. There are ones in our midst that we have issues with. Commissioner Shores has been detected with some cancer. And, Lord, we would just ask that you just be with him and his family, all for young folks there. And we just ask that you heal them for him and comfort for his family. And, Lord, as we would do our business today, we would ask for your wisdom. We would ask, Lord, for your discernment. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Stand, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Very good prayer, Commissioner McClure. Can I get a motion to excuse Commissioner Watford, please?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
We can't do that yet. We don't have a, we don't have a court.
Well, we do.
We've got one sworn in first.
The old court.
We, but you're...
Okay.
We have to get every one sworn in first.
All right.
We're in Mr. Kestner first.
Okay.
We're in medical order.
You up, Tripp? Amen.
Is it me?
No.
You, y'all up next.
I state your name.
I, Kestner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
Duties of my office.
As Commissioner for Davidson County.
As Commissioner for Davidson County.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I, Tripp Kestner.
Further solemnly and sincerely swear.
Further solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
Bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
To the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
Authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support.
And I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of said states.
The Constitution of said states.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
For the best of my knowledge and ability.
For the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I, Tripp Kestner.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will well and truly execute.
That I will well and truly execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
As Commissioner for Davidson County.
As Commissioner for Davidson County.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Commissioner McClure, are you ready?
Congratulations here, Tripp.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Well, I'm gonna need a minute right now.
Sounds good. Thank you. Congratulations, sir.
Left hand on the Bible and raise your right. I state your name.
I state your name.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As Commissioner for Davidson County.
As Commissioner for Davidson County.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I, Fred McClure.
Further solemnly and sincerely swear.
Further solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And that I will faithfully, oh, no, that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
State of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor.
And that I will endeavor.
To support and maintain.
To support and maintain.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of said states.
The Constitution of the states.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
For the best of my knowledge and ability.
For the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I, Fred McClure.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will well and truly execute.
That I will...
Well and truly execute. The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As Commissioner for Davidson County.
As Commissioner for Davidson County.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Will you sign your form?
Congratulations, Fred.
Thank you, my friend. About signed yours, so...
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
One more. Tripp, I know that your wife cried, and she'll really be crying about a year from now.
I probably will, too.
Your side. I state your name. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain. The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States. And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
I faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As Commissioner for Davidson County.
As Commissioner for Davidson County.
So help me God. I state your name. Further solemnly and sincerely swear.
Further solemnly.
Further solemnly. And sincerely swear. That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the United States. And I will be faithful.
And I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance. To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support.
And I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend. The Constitution of said states.
The Constitution of said states.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
For the best of my knowledge and ability.
For the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I, Todd Yates.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will well and truly execute.
That I will truly execute.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As Commissioner for Davidson County.
As Commissioner for Davidson County.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. That was long. Did you write that out?
No.
I didn't promise that.
It wasn't made at the time.
Had some tongue twisters in it.
Good job. Congratulations.
Thank you, Fred. Thank you. Appreciate that. Appreciate that. Congratulations, Fred.
When I y'all can excuse Commissioner Watford.
Okay, now can I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Watford?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Debbie?
Yes, sir.
I will turn this meeting over to you for the election of chair.
Yes, sir. I will entertain, at this time, I will entertain a motion for chair.
Madam Chair, Madam Clerk. Due to the fact that this county is moving in such a rapid pace, and we've got so many issues that are at the forefront, and we're in the middle of a lot of them, I hereby nominate Commissioner Yates as chairman.
Okay. Do we have any other nominations? If so, I will make, I will accept the second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries by a vote of six zero.
Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Now I will open the floor to nominations for vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Watford for vice chair.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Then may I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That motion carries by a vote of six zero.
Okay. Thank you all very much. It's an honor to serve Davidson County, and I appreciate the confidence to do so. Adoption of the agenda. Agenda, do I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Who was the second?
Me.
Did you get to count?
I sure did. Thank you.
Any opposed here? None? Okay, Ms. Harris, when you get a moment, the approval of bonds.
Yes, sir. According to general statutes that we learned a couple of years ago on section 58-7210, we need to approve the bonds each year of our tax collector, the sheriff, the register of deeds, and our finance officer. And just to be on the safe side, we also put our blanket crime bond in here to be approved. The bond for the tax collector is $250,000. The bond for the sheriff is $10,000. The bond for the register of deeds is $10,000. The bond for the finance officer is $1 million. And we do have a resolution to approve all of these bonds, if we could get that adopted.
Now, that's the amount of the bond, not the cost of the bond, correct?
Yes, that's the amount of the bond, yes.
I want to make sure everybody understands that part. Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the bonds?
Make a motion to approve the bonds.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries seven, six, zero. All right, we'll move on to Employee Service Award. I appreciate everybody coming out today and watching the swearing-in. Y'all more than welcome to stay here and watch the Employee Service Awards. And congratulations to Tripp. Good fight won, and look forward to serving with you, so... And of course, again, congratulations to you, Mr. McClure.
And you, Mr. Nick.
Thank you. All right, Employee Service Awards. Mr. Allman, you want to lead this off?
You want to sit down.
Move the podium.
We'll let him. Let's step down front here, shake some hands, and...
All right. Good morning. Thank you, Commissioners, County Manager Smith, for taking the time to recognize all of our employees this morning that have reached a new milestone in their service here to the citizens of Davidson County. For those that are being recognized this morning, as I read your name, you are welcome to come forward, collect your plaque that we have made for you. Once you're recognized, you can then either return to your seat, or we do have breakfast, coffee, and some other refreshments waiting for you over in Conference Room D. I'll be calling out each name grouped by department and at each five-year service level. So with that, we'll begin with the Department of Emergency Communications and the employees that have reached five years of service. We have Jennifer Bruce, Kristy Hepler, Heather Magpie, Anthony Owens, Ginger Thomason, and Robert Wilson.
That's the first time I've ever seen him card.
From the Department of Emergency Medical Services, we have Monte Engel, Michael Mabry, Miguel Martinez Hernandez, Valora Vixen, Jonathan Walser. From the Health Department, we have Tammy Carrick, Amanda Dunbar, Alicia Frisby, Angela Gray, Kathy Hubbard, Erica Martin, Leslie Morrow, Mallory Phelps, Aquilla Scott, and Belinda Wilson. From Inspections, we have Chris Schonk. From the Library, Julia Miller. From Integrated Solid Waste, Louis Fritus. From Public Works, David Boggs. From Purchasing, Levi Bruff.
Thanks, sir.
From the Register of Deeds, Casey Reyno. From the Sheriff's Department, we have Corporal Christopher Bame, Sergeant Jaques Brown, Corporal John Cornell, Corporal Brianna Everhart, Corporal Michael Hill, Corporal Wesley Hughes, Jeffrey Mabe, Detective Nicholas Matthews, Corporal Samantha Montalongo, Lieutenant Jameson Moody, Lauren Sherrill, and Detective Elizabeth Smith. From Social Services, we have Kyra Alcazar, Alicia Davis, Shatoya Lindsay, Lori Lorenz, Cassie McMillan. Callie Poovey. Keisha Temple. Shanetta Wilson. And Karen Young Shaver. From the Tax Office, we have Matthew Black. Alisa Cox. And Daniel McCahen. All right, we'll move on now to employees that have completed ten years of service to Davidson County. From the Animal Shelter, we have Christina Santana. From the Board of Elections, Andrew Richards. From EMS, Edward Hothoff. Laura Jordan. Jennifer Sheffield. From Finance, we have Alisa Hunt. And Katie Smith. From Information Technology, we have Alan Ray. From the Library, we have Wendy Beck. Sherri Sparks. And Caitlin Williams Cole. From Planning and Zoning, Stephanie Wilson. From Social Services, Anita Bean. Michelle Ellis. Brooke Hedrick. Tanya Stilly. Whitney Tucker. And from Tax, we have Ronald Hull. The following employees have completed fifteen years of service with Davidson County. From Emergency Services, we have Erica McDowell. Our Fire Marshal, Danny Ward. From Integrated Solid Waste, we have Randall Allman. From Legal, Lynn Wilson. From the Sheriff's Department, we have Captain Robert Phillips. Captain Tracy Raben. Lieutenant Rusty Ramsey. Corporal Jeff Stanley. Lieutenant Jonathan Todd. From Tax, we have Jane Witherspoon. And Transportation, Winette Sparks. All right, the following employees have reached twenty years of service to Davidson County. You know, with Emergency Services, Major Jason Hughes. From the Library, Ms. Shirley McKinney. From the Sheriff's Department, we have Sergeant Adam Gleef. From Social Services, Rhonda Holder. From Tax, Kristy Beckner. And April Michael Ellis. From Transportation, Joey Means. The following folks have reached twenty-five years in their term of service with Davidson County. From Emergency Services, we have Captain Clarence Hope. From the Health Department, we have Tina Hedrick. Tanya Hennessy. Sheila Miller. At the Library, Gregory Roland. From Purchasing, we have Dwayne Childress. At the Sheriff's Department, we have Major Billy Louia. And Lieutenant Jerry Soles. From Social Services, Teresa Bowers. Betty Lanier. Robin Penninger. And Kimberly Smith. We now reach these folks that have gotten to thirty years of service, or pretty much a complete career with Davidson County. So we recognize this morning from our Cooperative Extension, Troy Coggins. From Emergency Services, we have Chief Outon Haynes. And from the Library, Tanya Hensley. And then I would be remiss if I did not mention, we have one person we invited back because they had reached an exceptional milestone in their service to Davidson County. They could not be here with us, but from Information Technology before her retirement, Linda Harrison Irwin reached forty years of service with Davidson County. All right, and then before concluding, uh, we learned last year to divide this up. We've got a couple fe- people up here on the, the front helping with handing things out, uh, that are also being recognized. With five years, that would be me.
Yes, you would.
We also have our Assistant County Manager, Jason Martin. With ten years of service, we have our County Manager, Casey Smith. And last, but certainly not least, we have one of our very own Commissioners, Steve Shell, that's completed ten years of service on our board. All right, again, we want to thank everybody for being here this morning. Uh, I know I can extend appreciation on behalf of the County Manager and the Board of Commissioners, um, for everyone in attendance to be recognized. Uh, and just a reminder, we've got breakfast and refreshments just across the way for everybody that's been recognized this morning. Thank you so much.
That's a long time.
Better get you some, we got some down there.
Oh, I got you. How you doing?
Another year, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Thank you.
I like that.
There's something about deciding who's on the committee.
Even with the, even with the slow ones, we still have them through. Or the long, the bad ones.
How you doing?
Good to see you this morning, yep.
Brother, thank you, I appreciate you.
Hey, hey's over here talking, he can come around aside. You all right, Scott?
No, I gotta, I gotta fire them.
You got something?
How you want to approach it?
Yes, sir.
Dying right?
Say, we'll get this done, and then we'll be done. All right, Boards and Commissions, uh, let's go ahead and pull that one up. And if anybody wants to move, or change, or stay, or... I was just telling Trip most time what a new committee.
Yeah, I'm good.
We just hand the ones off.
That's right.
That was on there, so, um, I can't really tell you, oh, here they are, right here, yep. It'll tell you the ones Mr. Shore's is on.
Okay.
He's on the Health Board, um...
Parks and Rec, I think he was on there too, Mr. Chairman.
EC, that'd probably be a good one for you too. You on that one too, that's helpful.
I am, yeah. You probably enjoy that one too.
And you see what's on the list there, so you think you're good with this?
I know, yeah.
And Debbie will let you know the schedule of these meetings.
Yeah, okay.
Actually, the Health Board meets tomorrow. So if you all vote to approve this list, the Health...
She just left.
Think that it starts at three?
Three o'clock.
They've moved that, they've moved that, if you're the three or three-thirty, um...
They was doing it during lunch, and it'd take two or three hours, so.
Got you.
Now they doing it at three o'clock, so.
Got you.
If you get off, it takes the rest of the afternoon, you know.
Just let me confirm that real quick.
No, that's, that's true, I remember that.
Yeah.
Case.
But, um, Belinda had me put it on my calendar just in case. That way we could get, um, the Commissioners sworn in. Yes, three, yes.
What time do you normally get off work, Trip?
Usually around five.
Really?
Yeah, we work it out.
Yeah, I'm working it out, yeah. That's the thing, some of these committees like mine, I mean, I just take a day off at the time because we try to get the Facilities Committee, the Sewer Committee, and all that, uh... You won't have that, you'll just have some of these smaller ones.
Just let me know the scheduling.
Right, right, yeah. Okay, with that all said, uh, is everybody good with that?
I'm good, yes, sir.
Mission and effect.
We have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, uh, six zero. I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Good job, gentlemen.